Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the April 15, 2024 School Board Work Session. The time is now 6:00 PM. The School Board would like to take a moment to respectfully acknowledge that we reside on the traditional land of the Dunay people. Our mission is to provide an excellent and equitable education in a safe supportive environment so that all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the role?
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Ms. Maple is on Zoom?
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Here.
Ms. Marotti is excused. Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Thank you.
At this point, I'm going to throw it over to the administration. I did want to say one thing. We're hoping this, we're not going to get through all of everything every night, so in the interest of everybody's time and that we have a board meeting tomorrow, hoping that we end the meeting around 8:00 PM tonight. If it doesn't happen sooner, that that's our objective. Dr. Minert.
All right. Thank you, President Hardy. I'll toss it over to Diana to begin our work this evening. She is going to do a brief overview of some of the changes made in Article IX, hoping to save a lot of the conversations. We've had a fair amount of robust debate around Article IX already, and so hopefully just a quick overview of that so we can get into tonight's work, starting out with Article Zero.
Thank you. So I printed out a copy of the highlighted policies that I wanted to actually look at with you, but for the full Article IX version that was sent to you or that's online, you will see any of the edits that we agreed upon underlined, so you can look back through those policies and see them that way. But if, unless it's highlighted, I wasn't going to actually talk about it again tonight, so we'll just jump right in, and I'm going to start with page 18, Policy 9110. And this is School Board Membership, and I know when we left off last Monday that we talked about possibly waiting for a meeting that Dr. Minert would have with FNA towards the end of April, but we went ahead and created a policy revision. And knowing that we're not trying to agree upon this tonight, but just an example of what it would look like if it does get put forward to add an FNA representative to the school board. So I did not take out our current policy. That is still in the full packet that you all have, but as far as looking at what the revised policy might look like, this is the example. I also found with the conversation about student representatives, I had tagged a policy in Chapter IX on student counsel and trying to figure out where that was going to land, but this piece of the administrative regulation goes with the conversation that was happening last Monday about student representatives to the board and goes with this policy, so I plugged that in.
Mr. Doran?
I appreciate that update and that we'll be coming back to it because I do have even, I guess, more specific concern regarding FNA and what I might suggest. That's going to take some real significant conversation because that has changed from the initial conversation, and now it's one specific organization. I would suggest that we could go ahead with this policy minus that advisory conversation, member conversation, and do that separately. And I do think that it's important to link it with the, our conversation, or it would be complimentary, let's say, to our conversation about committees and that right now we do have an FNA representative that they could appoint, to my knowledge, that has not been acted on in the three years that it's been in place. And that was a modification to the initial implementation agreement. But we might be able to go ahead with the policy and deal with another advisory member on the committee at a later time. But I do have a real concern if now it's moved from tribal to FNA-specific, I think it's even broader concerns across the community.
Yes, Mr. or Dr. Minert?
So in listening to the conversation last, I guess, last week or a couple of weeks, all our weeks are running together in terms of the tribal representation, I did look at the implementation agreement again and wanted to read a part of it and why I thought FNA would be appropriate to include as the advisory member. So a piece of the implementation agreement says, "FNA is recognized through resolution by Doian Limited as representing the educational interests of Alaska Native American Indian students attending schools in the Fairbanks-Norstar Borough School District." And so to me, that clearly outlines that they would be the organization that we would partner with on having a representative or advisory representative on the board, and it is who we have the implementation agreement with and who we will partner with most commonly. And so that's why we started with this initial language before the board this evening.
And my understanding is this is mostly placeholder until we move it and have a more robust discussion that will happen later. So this is just an example of what could be there. Okay. So then, in the interest of not belaboring this point and knowing that we're going to have a full discussion with the board, we can set it aside, and that is placeholder language to be addressed at a later time.
Thank you, President Hardy. Mr. Doran?
And are we still talking about nine? Or are we moving on?
Article IX?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think your intent is to review the changes, and she's just kind of making us aware of them, and then we'll move on to where we'll actually have bigger discussions because we discussed all of this at the meeting last week.
I have a question.
Ms. Maple?
I am thinking that what I'm gathering from Mr. Doran is that he's asking for this to not be in this as it comes before the board, where we could have this be a motion or an amendment when we're approving the full policy. And I did just want to, I understand that we don't need to get into the details of this and our arguments for why it is or is not a good thing, but I, just to speak to that, I did want to say that I really do not want to see it pushed off into a different conversation or a different setting. I would like to be able to attempt to make progress on this, and I fully understand, as we said in the last work session, that my intent might not be what the majority of the board would prefer, but I would really like to keep this within this policy. I like that there's mock language there so that when it does come before us, we can amend that as needed, but it's already there to amend so that we can potentially, albeit not necessarily, have this be put into practice within this policy, within this round of approving our updated policies. I have had, since our last work session, quite a few conversations, to be quite honest, quite a few conversations really trying to explore some of the concerns that Mr. Doran shared because I didn't want to just assume that my opinion is somehow better informed in some of the conversations that I've had specifically with folks that are FNA former employees, ANE and former employees. I feel very hopeful that we can find a really amenable path forward that does not have a lot of, a lot of issues that will come up, you know, should we pass something. So I just wanted to say that, and I will mute myself again. Thank you.
And just to add clarity, my thoughts, and I would suggest any board member who thinks we should approach this differently, please email that to myself and Dr. Minert, and I absolutely will consider and go through it, but just so everybody in open meeting knows where my head is at, is that we pass as a packet anything that we have reached consensus. And then the individual policies, and there is more than just this one, that there is not consensus on, that probably the only way we will reach a determination is through a formal board motion, that those come individually through the process, so it will stay, we're still working through this process, it's not getting tabled, it's not being separated, but we've kind of culled out the things that we know are going to require a more robust discussion in an open, formal meeting, and then the chips will fall where they do, and board members will vote the way that they, you know, they determine is right, and that's where we'll progress from there. But if there is a way that you want to approach that, please email me or text me, and we will have phone calls, and I'm open to other opinions. That is just where I'm at. Ms. Burnett?
Sorry, being gone last week, I'm catching up. So this does not enact somebody on our board right now, placeholder for later, to have that discussion that the board could vote on, correct?
Yes, that is absolutely correct. This is just a continuation of that bigger retreat meeting that we had where we went through all this once, and we're just trying to get through policy, but there's, I think, at least six or seven within Chapter Nines that are going to require us to go through a formal motion because we're just not going to reach consensus otherwise.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, President Hardy. And I'll, as we look at each policy, that'll be my question to you, you know, is this going to go in the packet or is this going to be an individual policy to go through?
We can start.
So the next one is just a real quick letting you know that on page 25, 9123.1 was created to separate treasurer and clerk. So, I mean, it was a change, so I figured I would, I'd bring it up, but I don't think there was anything else to talk about there. And then the next policy is on page 26, and that is for attorney, and we worked on some language to discuss the tiebreaker that we were talking about at the work session last Monday, and so that is the highlighted sentence, "Any conflicting legal advice, if provided by both the borough attorney and district attorney, shall ultimately be determined by the authorized attorney as outlined in Exhibit 9124." And I also just wanted to look at, there is a sentence that speaks to legal advice in 9200, Policy 9200, and I think in talking to Dr. Minert about that, we thought it should just be taken out of 9200 since you did finalize this language on 9124, but I wanted to look at that with you. And 9200, what I'm referencing is going to be on page 36, and you'll see it as crossed out language right now.
So I'm just trying to toggle between the pages. So it's crossed out, number five on page 36 has been inserted into...
Can I answer that?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I did not insert that language. It was just kind of a redundancy in what it was addressing, so I think that we need to reconcile and make sure that what 9124 is stating is what you want it to state, but I don't know that it needs to be in two spots, and it is slightly different language.
Number five on 36 also made it so that the board basically had to approve by a majority vote for the board president to use legal counsel, which we had a conversation around that, that there's oftentimes the necessity for the board president to just act, and so that's why we thought, based on that conversation, that we could strike it and cover most of the attorney conversation in 9124.
And I think also with the updated language on the ability to call a special meeting or doing something, if the board president is unwilling to seek legal advice, there is now a way for a majority of board members to require a motion to seek that legal advice. So it kind of covers the backend without having to have the redundancy. Ms. Burnett?
So who is the authorized attorney?
Currently, it's John Seedor, but it could be whoever any future board might authorize.
Okay. It just seems a little confusing and still kind of redundant.
There was also a discussion at the last one around when we use the borough attorney and when we use our retained attorney, and that's, that exhibit is the memorandum of agreement that kind of lines out where those responsibilities lie. And so if it's something that our borough attorney would provide us legal counsel and defend us in court with, then she would be the tiebreaking vote. If it's something for that, we should naturally go to her. If it's something she's already established she's not willing to cover for us, then our retained attorney.
I don't think I have an issue with, on page 26, the highlighted, but I think it is important to keep in mind they give us legal advice or give us legal opinion, as attorneys have often told us, the board, it's up to us to decide whether we want to follow that or not, and we don't at our peril, you know, potentially. But I think that that is important. So, and I do think that, given the distinctions we've been able to work out and the attorneys were able to work out, which I think is really helpful to us as an organization, that the, you know, their designated roles are appropriately addressed here, but I do think it's important that we just keep in mind that it is, they give us opinion, they give us, yes, advice, so.
Thank you. The next policies that we can get into here...
Are we feeling like with the language that we added in 9124 that that could go in the packet, or does it need to be hearing? Okay, seeing heads nod.
Since I raised the concern, I'm comfortable with it moving ahead, but I just think it's , because I've watched the board have to make a decision with policies and other things.
Starting on page 28, we have school board committees, and this is going to be a discussion about committees that goes over this policy, 9130, and then the administrative regulation attached to it, and then also a new policy that was created at the last work session for ad hoc advisory committees, which is the 9130.1. I don't know the full intent on wanting to look at these committee policies and what all the board wanted to address. I will say that just looking at that first highlighted spot, third paragraph to the bottom, it says, "The superintendent will solicit volunteer membership," and I remember hearing that that wasn't exactly the most correct language for what that process looks like. However, I would say that in administrative regulation, it says pretty clearly how those volunteers are sought, you know, or appointed if it's coming from a union, so. And then the question was to pick one of the two options out of the last two paragraphs. 28, page 28.
And we skipped going over this policy at the last meeting because I think we're going to have a work session specifically on committees, so it's probably one we haven't discussed because we didn't discuss it last Monday either. And my recollection of why was in how people are put on committees, and there is conflicting between how it says in AR and how it says in policy. If it's the board member who's appointed by the president who determines committee assignments, or if it is first come, first served, you apply, you automatically get on the committee, and I think there was board members who wanted to have a bigger discussion about how that's played out, how it affects all of those pieces, and I think that's why we were saying we needed to have a more robust discussion.
Okay. And thank you. When I said last work session, I meant the one in January.
Yes.
So not last Monday.
Yeah, and we had it last Monday. We just pulled it. Ms. Burnett?
I would actually really like to have a work session on school board committees. That would be, I think, very beneficial to us because I think that we should also maybe take into consideration and discuss committee size. That way, we have better chances of filling and having quorums for our committee meetings.
Sorry, not to whisper off the microphone. Because FNA was unable to attend the meeting on the 29th, and we weren't sure if Ms. Dillard would or wouldn't, but it sounds like she might, it might be a good idea to have that work session on committees on that day, but we'll get more information out to the board. Mr. Burgess?
I would just support having that meeting as well, and that date sounds fine to me. The, on the question of size, just in, you know, I know we're not, we're going to have a whole discussion later, but size and quorum, one, another way to tackle the quorum issue is just to define it. It doesn't have to be half the committee. We can define a quorum however we want. That's why I brought my Robert's rules. So, so just to prime the, prime the discussion there.
Great. We will definitely get that information out to the board, but I think that's a good direction to head in for that meeting. Ms. Dillard?
Okay, thank you. We will move over those policies. So page 35, 9200, we already talked about taking out the number five sentence about, oh, actually, that was all that we had to talk about on that policy, so never mind. I thought there was something else. So we are just moving along really quickly now. Page 42, 9223, board vacancies. There was conversation last Monday at the work session about virtual participation in meetings and what happens if somebody doesn't even live here anymore and is wanting to just be participating virtually, and I noticed that there, we do have this policy that says if you no longer reside in the borough, then you wouldn't be able to be on the board anyway, so I thought that might have satisfied that, that line of questioning. So I just wanted to point that out for you. And then along the same lines, page 47, board development. Mr. Burgess, you were talking about board development and language that would address professional development and keeping up with laws and new regulations, and so I just highlighted this section that does speak to board development, and if there was anything that you, if this satisfied that, or if there was anything that you wanted to add, this might be a good spot.
I'm good.
Am I not supposed to call out the individual members?
Mr. Doran?
Okay, could you remind me what page, because I think I did have one question about that.
For the board development and discussing professional development of the board is page 47. It's 9240, Policy 9240.
All right, go ahead, I'll, there is one place that it talks about board development, but it's not here, and I need to find where that was.
Okay.
At something, Mr. Burgess?
Yeah, this is, it's a tiny, quick, minor thing, and it's a grammar nerd thing. Apologies, but the sentence after the highlighted sentence says, "Members are encouraged to attend at least one or more." It's, that's just redundant language. That's all.
At least one, okay. Can we have a quick conversation about grammar, actually, since you brought that up? At the January work session, Timmy had asked you if you... At the January work session, Timmy had asked you if you wanted school board to be capitalized. And ASB capitalizes school board and board everywhere. It also capitalizes superintendent. They do not capitalize president, vice president, or district, however. And so I felt to be in line with that decision and to be consistent, I went ahead and at least where district is a proper noun, I capitalized it. And I did the same with the other board positions to align with the superintendent piece. So I just want to make sure that everybody's okay with that. Okay. I did, I did, yeah. And I, and I guess it was, sorry, go ahead. Oh, that was, oh, bless you, bless you. I would argue that if you're saying board members or board policy, where board is an adjective and not a proper noun, it should not be capitalized. However, ASB does capitalize it everywhere. And I don't know, but I mean, we're getting ready to change like 400 policies, so making good decisions about how we want to look at it for the rest of our lives, for the next few years.
objectives are capitalized. You're, I think you're correct.
So do you want me to fix not capitalizing board where it is an adjective and not a proper noun?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I couldn't see everybody and didn't know if I was speaking out of turn or out of line. Sorry.
It's okay. Somehow we should make it so that we can see board members' hands. That'll be future tech things we'll figure out. Is the board comfortable with giving Ms. Dillard kind of grammar authority to make good choices?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I will do my best. I will never admit to anyone how long I studied that issue. So, moving on.
Sorry, Mr. Doran.
And I think just to save us time down the line, if it's a grammatical edit that needs to be done after we get all through these, that we can just do those without their having to come back to the board. That's a pretty normal process, but just keep that in mind.
Thank you. And I'm always willing and open to all the feedback. So, thank you. We are on to page 56, which is board norms. We talked about board norms at the last work session last Monday. I found your board norms by looking where you see them, at your seat. But at the January meeting, you did work on new board norms. And I am not sure if you were wanting to adopt those new board norms, or if that was still a point of discussion.
Mr. Doran.
I would suggest that we don't necessarily put the board norms into policy. I do firmly believe that it's worth our adopting board norms as, as an action of the board. But the reason I don't put them, wouldn't put them into policy is that they may change, and it's without having to change policy and do all the different readings and that type of thing. They're really how each board agrees to operate, rather than something that is in concrete for a period of time, in a sense. If they're in policy, is it a big issue? No. But I, I see it as that's our operational piece. But I think that it should, you know, maybe it's a simple thing that the board will adopt norms, maybe encourage that and that, but, but that's, that's my thought.
Ms. Anderson.
Yeah, as long as we have a code of conduct as to how the board conducts themselves, board norms have changed, but the code of ethics should be the foundation and standard that we operate on.
Is ASB's board norms, do they have, is this like one of their model policies? Or did you make a number to put in there for that?
I honestly don't remember, but this is an exhibit, so let me just make that clarification. This is not a policy that, you know, it's an exhibit. So if there was ever to be a new one, then we can just slide it in as an exhibit. But let me look real quick.
Ms. Burnett.
So, that being said, we could maybe generalize this section a little bit and go along more of the lines of what Ms. Anderson was saying with the code of ethics. And then our board norms can be our, like Mr. Doran was saying, something that doesn't necessarily need to be in policy.
Mr. Doran.
Yeah, I do agree with that. And, and if we're making a distinction, I honestly didn't realize what the E stood for when I was always just looking for policy. I mean, if it's just an exhibit, an attachment, that's, that satisfies that. But yes, not in policy, we can change those at any time without going through the multiple readings, so.
And something, I finally got back to that email, but it was only right before this meeting. She had emailed me about this exact piece. I think having the currently approved board norms as exhibit makes sense, but then when we have this board self-evaluation, we could definitely talk about these. And then the meeting after that retreat self-evaluation, we could formally adopt the new board norms that reflects this new board.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Mr. Doran.
Oh, sorry.
Just because it's in front of us and we have a draft, not spend a lot of time on it, under the, the January version, updated version that we will eventually act on. The quote, I think I would either drop, which would be my preference, or get rid of the first person that's in it. But I, I think it's an unnecessary for the norms.
I think we can discuss all of that at the retreat, but, yep.
Page 61 is the administrative regulation 9311. And we worked on the policy review cycle that you can see highlighted actually on the next page, 62. We had it at a four-year cycle, and we stretched that out to a six-year cycle. Which does align more with what our current policy and administrative regulation says. The next is page 64. This is meetings. And I did a little bit of editing to write under notice of meetings because it was just duplicated paragraphs because our policies said the same thing. One was about public notice, one was about board notice, so I put that together. And then I, we did not discuss the special meetings, but I know that the paragraph or two under special meetings was part of the editing that was done with ASB back in January that President Hardy and I followed up on. And so I think that we still wanted to see this piece approved by the board.
Mr. Doran.
Did we have elsewhere, I thought we had a phrasing that a special meeting by a majority of the board may be called even if the president does not want to call one.
So the updated thing says special meetings of the school board may be called by the presiding officer or a majority of school board members. A majority of board members may call a special meeting. I think what you're saying is we're missing the, no, because the agenda, so majority would still be four. Sorry. May call a special meeting by either indicating a wish for a special meeting during an open meeting of the board, regular work session, or provided to the president in writing. Once these conditions have been met, the president shall call a special meeting in a timely enough manner to appropriately address the issue. So the president is still calling the meeting, much like when we added the language we did around adding agenda, things to the agenda. This, what I'm reading is that it would need to be a majority, so four or more members instead of three, which is a lower threshold to add an agenda item. And then shall means it has to be called. It's no longer at the discretion of the president. It will be called, but that it needs to be timely enough to handle the issue, but it might not be the very next day. And our prior policy said may instead of shall, correct?
I'll have to look at that. Special meetings may be called by the president or on petition of a majority of the members of the board.
So we've changed it to prescriptive language. It is still called by the president, but that you have prescribed them that they must call once a majority of the members in a timely enough fashion to address.
So, I don't want to beat a dead horse, so, but I do have a concern just in terms of the, a recent meeting that we had that the majority called and not necessarily would be called by the president.
Because we violated our policies.
Our policy says or, so.
Would you prefer this be polled and voted on by the board? Ms. Burnett.
I think it's worth a discussion, absolutely. I, I think it is absolutely worth a discussion by the board to see what our intent is, what we all feel that policy should state. That, that's what we do, policy work. So absolutely, let's have a discussion, let's add it in.
Yep, no intent in doing that. This came out of that longer meeting, and we had kind of coalesced that we thought that this addressed the problems. I actually, this was a big thing I wanted fixed because in a prior year, when someone, we won't get into it. I agree, it's worth a discussion and worth fixing. And if we need to pull it, then we can add it to that.
So policy 9320 will go in, not be in the packet and go in individually. Okay. The last one in regards to Article 9 is on page 79, and it is policy 9324. And this is one that you did talk about at the last work session last Monday for a bit and wanted to come back to with when more members were going to be here, I believe.
So to refresh, Ms. Burnett, we weren't sure, we've received conflicting, well, we've received legal advice that says that we should no longer be keeping recordings on YouTube. And then we have board member feelings that conflicts with that legal advice. And I would think this is another one that needs to come before the full board, since I don't think we're going to reach an agreement and consensus around it. But that's why it's been flagged by Ms. Dillard.
May I?
Yes, Ms. Burnett.
So meaning we shouldn't keep things up for three months? We shouldn't keep things up for six months? We should have things gone by a year? Like, is that what this is?
Dr. Meyer.
So both CDO's office and AASB recommend not having recordings up after minutes are adopted by the board.
So meaning they could just go back and read the minutes and look at it that way?
Correct.
Interesting. Definitely worth a discussion.
Sorry. Putting this through as an individual policy, would we want the language to just stop at the highlighted? So do we want to keep it? The audio recording shall be available to the public from the district's website or by request at the board office during normal business hours, period, meaning that they just are always there and available? And the...
Is it to this question, Ms. Doran, or we'll come back?
To this point, go ahead.
So I think she's asking a question. What would we like the placeholder wording to be? And then so that when it comes before the board, then we would amend it and be able to discuss it. My thought is, even though it's not what I agree with, maybe it should state what the legal suggestion is. And then we can have that discussion and make it clear that we are choosing something different than a legal advice we've been given. Mr. Doran.
Okay, I would suggest that we go with current practice for now. And I guess I'm trying to figure out, I mean, if these are polled, we should have that conversation before it goes to the board. And so if we're pulling it for, you know, and we're going to have these ones that are polled, we need conversation about as a board, let's do it in a work session and stuff so we can hammer it out. I do have concerns about this. I'd be fascinated in terms of what, why the legal opinion is there. The comment was, last time was that, well, it could be used against us. I think that's poor rationale for it, my opinion. And I'm not a lawyer, because I'm also concerned that in today's day and age, people record. And they could bring that, and they could have a different, or their allegation is different than what actually was said. We're still in public, our conversation is still the official minutes are what count, and they are very, very limited. They're very, I mean, we do the bare minimum requirement of actions legally, according to parliamentary procedure and all like that. But I think our conversations are really important to the intents of what we're doing. I also thought after our meeting is that in terms of professional development, it is great to go back and watch yourself. But my bigger question is, if we're going to pull these, that we still have that conversation before we brought, bring to the board to start the formal process? Do we do it in work session, hammer that out, and then bring it forward?
Ms. Burnett.
Yeah, I'll agree to that. We should bring it to a work session and fully have a discussion of it. I would side with legal advice just because if you've not seen the things AI can do, it don't matter who's recording you in this room. If we have things that are left there, it, it's crazy. I don't, anyway, I, discussion, absolutely.
Unless there's somebody else, I'll put, but that, so this is our, we had a retreat in which we discussed this. We had a work session last week in which we discussed this. We're kind of touching on it now. If we feel we need to add it, maybe we can add it to that committee's discussion, but I don't think we need to have, the same arguments we've all voiced and we've all had them. And I can kind of take perspective and articulate other people's arguments, which is how I know that I've been listening. Can I tell you back your opinion in a way that you would agree with? So I feel like I kind of know we're most members, other than Ms. Anderson. And I kind of know because I, she gave us some good information last week. So I, I don't want this to get too bogged down. I would be happy to add it to the committee if that's where we go, work session, so we can have one more with everybody here thing. It would be at this point, I'm thinking, we've received... It would be, at this point, I'm thinking, we've received legal advice that we've paid for, perhaps we should ask for legal advice that we don't, and see if Ms. Dolan will give us her perspective, since the Assembly does still record all of their meetings, and maybe why they do that. Since we're already thinking we're going to ignore paid-for legal advice, why not? Let's just get the full gamut. And then, we'll treat it like we have the other policies, where they'll come before us and go through that three-step process, but we can have one more robust Board discussion outside of that. Mr. Dorn?
Okay, I'm sorry, I take some objection to the idea, the implication, that we're just ignoring it, that I might be just ignoring legal advice. I would like to have a better understanding of that legal advice, besides, oh, we might, it might be used against us. That doesn't, I know there's more behind it, I think it's important for us to have that, and we should have it by the time we discuss it. And I think in terms of the, when we're talking about other ones that we're pulling, that, yeah, we can do several policies that night.
Point well taken, I did not mean to insinuate that you were ignoring legal advice. I am also of the mindset that I would prefer it stays up on YouTube, so I am included in that, and for many of the same reasons you've expressed. I am sorry that I was more careless with my words, but that's not what I'm insinuating. Mr. Burgess?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say something similar politely, clarify that it's not ignoring, it's considering legal advice and choosing to go in our own direction, so, but I appreciate that.
Ms. Dillard?
Thank you, that is the end of the conversation for Article Nine, so it sounds like there will be another work session to look at Article Nine specifically about committees, and we can have this 9324 policy ready with options, so that you can talk about that too. Otherwise, we'll be getting the policies ready, we'll have a packet, one packet of the policies that we think are pretty straightforward for the Board, and then we'll have the individual policies pulled for discussion, and when those come before the Board, I guess we'll, when you let us know.
Yeah, I mean, I think the goal would be to bring, hopefully, all of Article Nine to the May 21st meeting for at least first reading, and then work through the process after that. And so, at that 4/29 meeting, if we can try to get through as much as we can, so that we can start moving some of these policies.
Mr. Dorn?
So, two questions, one in relation to that, so it'd be the first meeting in May for an information item, and the 21st for the first reading?
I think initially coming into tonight, we were hoping that the seventh would be first reading, but I, in the conversation tonight, it seems like pushing everything back to the 21st for an informational report, and then first reading would be in June.
And the second reading then in August, ostensibly.
Yeah, unless the Board adds any kind of special meetings for policy adoption.
Okay. Then, one other thing, as we're talking, how we present it, and I don't have an answer to, I'm just putting it on the table, that we be cognizant, a lot of these, for the public, and for them to be able to look at, you know, we have ones that we really effectively are only changing the number, we're not doing major rewrites. There are some that are more significant, and that we just be cognizant of that, so how much the public, even though they sort of have three shots at it, can consume it at one time, so as we space them out, so just putting it on the table.
Okay, I think we are moving on to Article Zero. So, the full Article Zero, Article Zero is Philosophy Goals, Objectives, and Comprehensive Plans of the District. And you did receive the full article, and we brought forward a few for discussion. We have the philosophy, goals for school district, and goals for student learning that we felt were important for the Board to weigh in on. The first policy is 0100, and this policy on the left-hand side, so this is the one that has the side-by-side comparison, the policy on the left-hand side is the AASB model policy. It was accepted at that first October work session by the work group that had this article. It is very different than our Policy 140, and so we thought it was a good idea to look at these as a side-by-side.
Mr. Dorn?
I guess a general observation is, what was accepted at the, was suggestion from a working group, this is the first time that we all are looking at them, so I think that's a really important thing, it's not that it hasn't been accepted before, it's just with the working group. So, but with that, I definitely favor our, our current education philosophy, I think it's much more reflective of our local discussions over a period of time, and I think that's really important for what we stand for, rather than a generic statement, which is the AASB one. Under the AASB, I have a specific and strong objection to understanding and supporting healing section. I think there are things in there that resonate with some communities in the state more than other communities, and that would need a, should have a much further conversation. But some of the concepts of respect and appreciation for people's backgrounds and situations, et cetera, I think is reflected in our current policy, and so I would advocate for our version as being much more appropriate.
Ms. Burnett?
I actually agree with Mr. Dorn, that's not to throw out what AASB has lined out, but I feel like their philosophy, policy could be, especially the understanding and supporting healing portion, could be somewhere else, not necessarily in the education thing. And also, I like ours because it refers to the district as a whole, whereas AASB is really focused on just the school board, and I think that the school board and the district together do all these things, which is what we do.
President Hardy?
Ms. Maple?
I do agree that, at the very least, that first paragraph from ours, which is our language that we talk about, that we use very regularly, should be incorporated into our philosophy. I can acknowledge that perhaps the entirety of the understanding and supporting healing piece might not be, might seem like a lot, and I would be open to a conversation to really dig in and see what we want to maintain, but I think that there is value in listening to the expertise of AASB that has input from such a broad array of school boards and communities, many of which, in a community like ours, that has such a broad and diverse population, are actually represented here, that it warrants a deeper, if not to just be included and approved, which I would be totally fine with, but I understand apprehension therein, that I would really like to dig into that, because I think that a lot of the pieces in here absolutely have a place in our philosophy, you know, in 2024, as we really strive to understand the various impacts, especially intergenerational, that this piece on intergenerational healing and equity, that we really are understanding more now than we ever have before. What has to be happening at every level, including schools, to address these things? And, I mean, especially at schools, especially with the history of schooling in our state, so I don't want to throw, throw it all out, but I understand if you would like to take a deeper, a deeper dive into that, and I would support that with the intention of hoping to retain some of it. Thank you.
Mr. Burgess?
Yeah, I'm gonna throw my support behind Ms. Maple's comments. I also believe that there's value in many of the things in that, those two paragraphs under understanding and supporting healing. I might, you know, I think there's room for improvement in, in the way that it's presented. And I also agree that there are many things that I like more about our current policy overall. There are other issues that I have with it, though, I don't, I think that it's, there's a few phrases in there, for example, end of the second paragraph, it says, ultimately, however, the individual student controls his or her learning, like, that's, that's not relevant, that doesn't need to be here. There's things like that, that I think we can, we could definitely improve this policy. But there's, there's things I like about it, it provides some clarity and some local, as Mr. Dorn said, reflective of the local community.
Ms. Anderson?
I would stay with our current language, because it suits our community. AASB, and a lot of the policies and their focus, which as a Board of Director from there, we've had much discussion with them to, to embrace more of the community, not just focus on the Alaska Native, or, you know, how this sounds, because we have a broader demographics that we provide services for. And if you just highlight that you're going to, you know, bring healing there, or whatever, the healing really can't come, it's a nice idea, it's a nice concept, but I feel that healing comes by how we practice our policies and what we put in place, so that students can achieve their academic success in different pathways to succeed for their life. So, I like the language that we have, and I think in our, the other document that we have, it's on the wall over there, I can't think of what it's called, in the yellow.
Strategic plan.
Our strategic plan, thank you. We've taken great care to rework that document, because we saw the need for it to be reworked, so it's a focal point for our district, our staff, our educators and students, and how we conduct the business of the district, to provide for our students what they need. And in that providing, my personal aspect would be, we see them thrive, we see them, we create safe spaces for them, so because we do those things that are in our strategic plan, it brings healing, and it brings a firm foundation underneath them for them to achieve. And so, that's why I like our language, and, you know, the Board of Directors from AASB, we've had much discussion about, you know, coming in, in, I guess, for lack of a better word, the including, because our, our services is to districts who, are districts for all of our students in public education, so, my take.
Mr. Dorn?
I would suggest that we, yes, not, not forget what some sample language, and I think it's important to note that AASB is a sample language, which they don't give a recommendation whether you use it or don't use it, they leave it totally. The ideas are important. For right now, one of the things that does strike me, though, with the, our current education philosophy, is it does reflect our strategic plan, and we're about to embark on a year-long conversation about what our next strategic plan will be, and so, this gives us a foundation, maintains that foundation that we've adopted and put in play, and then that may very well need revisions when we're done with our upcoming strategic planning process, and that would be the appropriate time to do it. And, you know, looking at, not only at AASBs, but other philosophies of districts that we can look at, you know, and we can research those and see what's there, or how those concepts that are suggested in the AASB sample, okay, not necessarily a model, just sample language, you know, so we can't, we don't need to forget those, I think, as people have noticed, noted, they're all things that are worth keeping in, and we talk about trauma-informed and stuff like this, needs for our kids, so those all have to be part of our conversations over the next year, so.
So, putting myself in the queue, couple of things, I always have to save them up. I think that AASB's model policy, that first note and paragraph, since that references state law, is worth preserving no matter where we go, that makes a lot of sense, it's why it's there. I am also inclined to keep our current district's educational philosophy, it reflects our community, but knowing that, I went, while people were talking, and I looked Anchorage's policy, they, theirs does not reflect the model policy from AASB, it is just two short paragraphs, Juno's is in verbatim the model policy, so it kind of tells you where two different communities have landed on this subject. In our new policy review cycle, Article Zero is what we will review very first thing, that's year one, and we're restarting over, so I think we would have time to do the strategic plan. I would really like to have both the Diversity Committee and the Policy Committee look at this, once we go through that, and see where we land there, but in the effort of moving us forward, that might be a good way to get us through this, and know that we're not putting it off, I like a lot of what's here, but I think it, we need more input, and knowing that that will be the very first thing we tackle, Articles One and Zero, the following year.
So, clarification?
Mr. Dorn?
So, you're suggesting we go with our, our wording, just renumbering it, and then we'll be doing the final, the revisions or reviews of those within the cycle?
Yes, except, I would say that we add in both the note that says the following paragraph reflects state of education policy, and the paragraph that immediately follows it, since that is reflective of what the policy is in the state of Alaska, and then ours follows it instead of the model policy from AASB. Mr. Dorn?
If I might ask, that's their reflection of, AASB's reflection of state policy, it's not the wording from state policy necessarily, and I think it does parallel very much our first paragraph, which is reflective, I think our first paragraph is also reflective of state education policy.
So, not being myself familiar with that section of state law says, I would be comfortable with having us look that up, and just make sure that that's what it is, in which case, we keep the note and we just transfer ours over. But I think the more we can provide information for people who are But I think the more we can provide information for people who are trying to understand, the better, because that's reading it. I'm like, oh, there's a policy that talks about educational philosophy, or a statute that our state has already passed, it gives me the chapter, it gives me all that, and then it was done in 1990. I like having that information so I can go and look it up, and I believe it would be a clickable link. So worthy keeping, I'm fine if the two reflect each other. Ms. Dillard.
That first paragraph you were referencing is straight from the statute, that is the statute language.
So I would suggest we keep what's in the statute.
Mr. Burgess.
Yeah, I just looked up the statute myself, it is verbatim, and I would support keeping that in our policy. I don't think it's, I do, I hear Mr. Dorn's comments that it's, our first paragraph has kind of similar value statements. I don't think there's a problem with the redundancy in this particular case.
Okay. Thank you. And so this will go in the packet? Okay. The next two policies, I'm sorry that I didn't do a side-by-side, I guess it would have been more consistent with what we did with the first one, but the policies really were, they did align much more, the ASB policy to ours. The link to our policy is embedded in the online version, if you can click on the link. But I think in reviewing this with Dr. Minert, we were comfortable, the district is comfortable with the policies that were put forth at the October work session. So looking at O200 goals for the school district, the first three paragraphs are ASB language. And then where you can see that 150 in parentheses, that's where our policy language was embedded into the overall ASB policy. And so that was the decision at that very first work session back in October.
Mr. Dorn.
So consistent with the other, that note in the box would be deleted, because it only references sample language. I had a question in terms of the CF reference on school-based management, and what are we referencing there?
That might be one that we are not adopting, let me just double-check real quick. Yes, that's not applicable to our district, and I think it just needs to come out as a cross-reference.
Okay, so those CFs in parentheses are all ones that are, would not be part, would...
The cross-references are to cross-reference policies that ASB embed in their policies. So sometimes we are going to find mistakes where it's a policy that we did not adopt because it does not apply to our district, or for whatever reason. And then sometimes we've added cross-references too, as we've gone through some of the policy revisions.
Okay, follow, so clarification on that. So those will be, those will not show up in our policies?
The cross-references will show up in our policies, similar to, unless it's wrong, like the O420, but for ones that are legitimately cross-referenced policies, this is how they will show in our policies, similar to how we have our policies in board docs where there's a list of cross-referenced policies.
Okay, I'm sorry to belabor. So I understand, then you said that they may cross, be, on here, there may be cross-references to things that don't apply to our district, those will be deleted, they will not show up?
Correct. It's a mistake that this one is in here right now. So we will keep cross-references when they are actual cross-references to policies that we'll have, correct.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Dorn.
I'm trying to find it in here, I had it on my notes from looking online, but there is a reference in terms of race in several places in our policies, and I just want to reference, or comment on it, to consider race versus using the word ethnicity. I know there's a legal understanding of race, inappropriate as it may be, because it's one race. But, so I go back and forth, whether we continue to promote that, or in certain circumstances we know it's going to be there, but in other circumstances, a more accurate identification of individuals, in different ethnicities or such. So that's a, it happens in more than one place, but it came to me in looking at this section for tonight.
And Mr. Dorn, are you seeing that in the current policy O200 that we're looking at now, or just as we come across them in the future?
My notation was that it showed up in O100.
Okay.
But I'm not seeing that on the paper copy, I saw it on the...
President Hardy.
Ms. Maple.
I would just like to, oh, sorry, there's a weird echo, to support Mr. Dorn in that, that there is a lot of, of information telling us that continuing to use that language is supporting some, essentially outdated information that we can't quite escape, and if we can be, you know, a leader in changing that to more appropriate language, I would definitely support that. I hadn't, it is not something I clocked, so I don't have any specific examples, and I don't know the, you know, where it occurred in this policy that put it on Mr. Dorn's radar, but I do agree with his, with his suggestion there.
I found where it was.
Go ahead, Mr. Dorn.
It was in the, the ASB sample language, and it was on page four on the online version. So that's where it came up. We didn't accept that, so that's taken care of in that area, but there are other areas in our policies where that is, and I put that out for consideration by our board.
And to clarify, it's substituting ethnicity instead of the word race, a global edit? Or when it makes sense?
I, I, Mr. Fine might have something to...
I mean, I think it'll depend, so I don't think it can be a global edit, because sometimes there is, like, I just pulled up where we might have, where you might have seen this, and non-discrimination, like, it should include race and ethnicity, because that comes from federal guidelines and they list both. And so there might be instances where it's appropriate to use both, or one or the other, so I wouldn't want to do a global edit.
So there's an example in the next policy.
Ms. Burnett.
I just actually wanted to support Dr. Minert, race and ethnicity are actually two different things, and so I don't think globally that should be edited out, because it really isn't necessarily interchangeable, depending on how you're referring to it, so, yeah.
And it sounds like, Mr. Dorn, that we will see it in the very next policy, so we can talk about it then. Is there any other feedback on how this policy is presented, or do we like it? So the next policy is O210, Goals for Student Learning. This is all ASB policy language. And it was moved forward from that October work session by that work group.
I'm so sorry, I printed all of these documents, because I knew I wouldn't have access to another screen, and I have lost...
Page six?
Where we are.
Do you have page numbers?
I do.
Page six.
Is that, but we're not on Goals for the School District anymore.
No, we're Board Policy 210, Goals for Student Learning, unless we missed something that you wanted to go back to.
Page eight.
No, absolutely not, I don't. I just have different page numbers, perhaps from my own printer, but I found where we are. Thank you for that. I will stop now.
Sorry, yeah, there's a, there's a full, there's a document that has the full article and then just the ones that we were going to discuss, so there are two online.
Thank you.
And the, and the online is different pages than the printed out.
Mr. Dorn.
Could you just clarify, so the working subcommittee subgroup put these from ASB, do we have ones offhand somewhere under this, or this is a new section?
Yes, yeah, I have it linked in here, so I'm not sure if you can, if you're on the online version, linking it to our policy in board docs, which is Policy 142. It's kind of a combination of Policy 141 and 142. But all of the language that we have presented here is the ASB policy language.
Mr. Dorn.
Okay, I think this 0210 does, and according to its title, for student learning, does pretty well capture our Policy 141. And, you know, as far as I, I don't, nothing jumped out at me as, you know, that we're really, really missing, or, you know, that the other wording is better. I do like our Policy 142, which is institutional goals, and would suggest, that's not included in these for student learning, goals for student learning. So maybe a 0211 with institutional goals, I kind of like that concept for us, and there are some differences there. But in terms of 0210, yeah, number seven does talk about races, and maybe ethnicities is a better word in this case for it. I just toss it out again, what are we promoting, and in line with a lot of the trainings we've done over, over the decades, has been to recognize that there is one race in legal, federal and the legal, and I will say supportive of the observation that Dr. Minert made earlier, that there are some legal references that are beyond our control, but where we can control it using the appropriate language.
Ms. Burnett, then Mr. Burgess.
If anything, I would say in number seven, we add the word ethnicity, keep races, it'd be cultures, ethnicities, races, and countries. It's, again, two very different things there.
I, I have questions about some of the wording in this. For example, since we're, since number seven was just mentioned, when we say ideals and contributions of other cultures, races, and countries, contributions to what? What are, what are we contributing to here? It's vague. Similarly, on three, I don't understand, maybe it's because I don't have an educational background, but mastery of the basic skills, what are the basic skills? What does that mean? And if it's an and, you know, if the basic skills then follow, then we can just eliminate it, but, but, you know, what are the basic skills? I think I have more, I have to comb through this a little bit. One thought on number 10, we could easily substitute in our own language there, you know, we say, what do we say? To, for students to thrive in a diverse and changing society, right? Could slide that language right in there. But yeah, I think that some of the wording in this needs, needs a little bit of work and/or definitions, because it's, it's not, it's not always clear to me what, what is meant.
So the top part, my understanding is the school believes the quality education, so that's what we're referring to, as far as each one of these things contributes to a, what we define as a quality education. And it provides the opportunity for students to develop, so mastery of basic skills. As an educator, when I think of basic skills, I think of grade level expectations, which are standardized throughout the state, and that's a huge thing that, like, educators have to go through and understand. And when I go to, are we at the basics, have you mastered the grade level expectations, and where on those are you, are your GLEs? So we might, for someone who isn't, you know, in there, add something if we wanted to further define it, but that's what I think of basic skills. I really like your change for diverse and changing society on 10, though. I think that's very well done. Mr. Dorn.
I'm going to withdraw my support into being reflective of Policy 141 as I'm looking further through that. It's much more thorough, I know it's longer, and we, brevity sometimes is nice, but I think in this case, ours does a much clearer and better picture of what we hope for our kids.
And policy, our Policy 141 is up on the screen here. And so you're saying, Mr. Dorn, that you prefer our policy to the ASB?
Yes, yes. I think it doesn't much, you know, again, it tailors what we want for our community and has developed over time from our community.
President Hardy.
Ms. Maple?
I just wanted to make a perhaps last comment about the conversation about race versus ethnicity, and where we use those words and how we use them. And I, I do fully, I appreciate Dr. Minert's comment that there are places where that is language that is keeping in with, you know, existing laws or statutes, and that absolutely belongs where appropriate. And I did just want to like acknowledge that my, my agreement with Mr. Doran and my comments earlier are, I, I happen to be right now in, in Minneapolis at a, for work at a conference on advancing racial justice in museums, and I sat in an eight-hour session today where we discussed at length the root of those terms, specifically the concept of race and what it is rooted in, and it, the, you know, that, there are still many areas, many situations where it's a really relevant, important term and concept that we use, like this census and, but that in general, it's a, a concept that is, you know, as we progress in society, that it's, we're, we're more and more understanding that it is rooted in, in falsehoods and is, is a concept used to oppress, not a concept used to understand, or, I don't know, I, I would be happy to honestly use my time here at this, at my, my day job conference to gather some more information, to bring back and, and share if that would be helpful. But I just wanted to, to give a little more context of what, where I think that Mr. Doran is approaching this from, that's an assumption, though, and I won't claim to know his, his intentions, but it's certainly what my intention is in my agreement. And I, it's a super heavy and complex conversation, I won't pretend it's a simple one, and perhaps it's, it's too broad to just be a suggested edit throughout an entire policy packet, that I, I totally understand if that's the case. And if that is the case, I would invite a conversation in another setting, and would be happy to do whatever work or information gathering would be helpful ahead of that. So that's all, again, although I keep saying that I'm done, and then I keep having more to say, but thank you.
Mr. Burgess?
I, I can understand why Mr. Doran prefers our Policy 141. There's, there's some good detail in there. Sometimes with policy, you wonder if there's too much detail, but I think, I think this lays out a lot of important components. I do think that it's missing some of the things that are in the AASB policy, though. And one of those things is the, the, that first sentence in the AASB version, it's very student-focused. Quality education provides an opportunity for each student to develop. I like that language better than the three introductory sentences in our current policy, which, you know, well, in one of them, we do talk specifically about the student's individual potential, but I, I just, I think that, there's elements of both that I like, and I, I'd like more time to kind of study and, and merge.
Guess, oh, Mr. Doran?
So, do things to, through the chair to Ms. Maple, I think, Ms. Maple, we have a similarity of thought, so, since you were wondering, I think, I think that is there. And to Mr. Burgess, are you suggesting us just bring over that first sentence to 141?
Yeah, I think that's, that's part of it, but I think there's also some of the bullet points that, that AASB's version has that we could incorporate into ours, because I, I don't see that they're all, they're all there. And, and, you know, with, I'm saying that with the, the, keeping my earlier comments in mind, too, that, that the language in the AASB version on some of these bullet points could really be improved or better defined as well.
Ms. Dillard?
So I can work on reconciling these two policies to capture both, and then present them, when this, it's going to be a little while, I guess, when these actually get before the board for approval, but if that's the route that we want to go, I can just work on a revised version of this and either bring it back to a future work session, or look at bringing it forward for policy revision.
Dr. Minert?
And I think it might be my recommendation for the board to stick with our adopted policy, and then if you've got additional things that you like within the AASB policy, policy, email me and we can get those included in a revision. And as we go through this process, if it seems like there isn't consensus around bringing in AASB and having to do a lot of work versus our already adopted policy, that we would lean on the adopted policy and then bring in things that we liked from AASB.
Mr. Doran?
I'm very amenable to that approach, also being mindful that as we go through our strategic planning over the next year, there may be this 210, 0210, maybe one of those ones we want to flag to particularly come back to and at least look at in light of the strategic, the new strategic plan.
Put myself in the queue. I agree with a lot of what has been said, having read now our policies, I prefer what we have there. There is like, two things from AASB that I think make a lot of sense to pull over, which would be bullet point two, but adding in, so a positive attitude toward responsible citizenship, and I think it should go and civic participation. And so if we pulled that over, I didn't see it anywhere else. And then, even though the, the vagueness is there in number three, it outlines all of the things, when we hear people say, oh, we need to teach reading, writing, and arithmetic, here we go. We need to teach basic skills and working knowledge of mathematics, technology, reading, language arts, including effective oral and written communications, the sciences, geography, history, government, citizenship, world languages, and fine arts, and I would add music. And that really says this is what we value and what we teach in our district, and that's not aligned anywhere in those two. But I, then I think mostly sticking with what we already have, it seems, you know, it was developed in 1980, it was last revived in 2013. I, I think it is reflective of our community, and I did, once I read through it, appreciate a lot of those pieces, and I, I agree with Mr. Burgess's, you know, equality education. Some were marrying this, and maybe we could combine Policies 140 and 141 in some kind of, so that it holds that spot. I don't know if that's necessary, but since we're trying to move it over to AASB, as far as, oh, not 140, I mean, 141 and 142 is what I meant to say. Or unless there's a separate one, it didn't seem like there was a separate instructional goals, they just have student goals, but we're listing goals, however we decide to put it together.
Thank you. I would say that 142 also is, with institutional goals, it does kind of align with the goals for the school district in that 0200, even though we brought over language from 150, I think that 142 is kind of captured in the 0200. For number three, do you want it to say mastery of basic grade level expectations instead of basic skills?
I believe there's GLEs for all of those things, I know we have art and music GLEs, so I think that fixes the clarification, and yeah.
Yeah, that, that would work for me, make it more clear. I, sorry, while we're, while we're on number three, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's captured somewhere else or not, but physical education and, and health? Those, those could both be added, yeah, thanks.
Mr. Doran?
In terms of 142, you're suggesting the, to include that wording into 200, because it, it does, I, I don't mind combining the two together, but in 200, it does say, you know, references district roles several times. I think the institutional, I think, you know, there are things that we do as institutions. It's consistent to make it 0211 for the institutional goals, if we want to roll them into 200, 200 is the global piece. But I think I, I like, I really like the push to think of first and foremost what we're doing for students, but then also as an institution and as an organization, what are the goals that we do that really help promote that? And there, there are some different needs in folk I.
So I'm sorry, let me ask a follow-up question on that. Do you want to see, do you want to ensure that the language that's in 142 is captured in one of these policies, or are you suggesting we add a new policy for institutional goals?
I think in the spirit of 200, and then the 2, 0210, this would warrant 0211. I don't know that we have another one conflicting with that at this point. And so the, the 0200 is the broader, and then it breaks it down for students and institution. So I like capturing that dual perspective, so that's what I would suggest. And I think it leaves 200 a little bit less cluttered, it's...
Okay. We can add a new policy, 0211, to capture institutional goals under our 142 policy?
That's my suggestion, I don't know if it's amenable to others.
So would it be, we have goals for student learning, should we phrase it somewhere similar for goals for institutional improvement, or how, I mean, is that really, somewhere so we keep it similar to the headings we're using?
Dr. Minert?
I think the way I would approach the institutional goals part is these would be your strategic plan goals that come out of strategic planning, and so that's what would be captured in my mind in this section, and then hopefully, you know, in the next five years, when they do new strategic plan goals, that they would readily come back to the new policy that we're going to create.
I really like that idea.
Mr. Doran?
Yes, I, I mean, definitely, but for now, since that's, you know, a year away, that we bring over and... I, the smoothest thing is just call them institutional goals, or, you know, it doesn't, since AASB doesn't have a title, we do. You know, I don't think we have, because I'm thinking goals for institute, for the institution gets a little wonky, so.
Policy 0200 is goals for the school district, so I'm just wondering how those are different.
I have the same question. I, I feel that the school district is the institution, so clarification would be great.
Mr. Doran?
Okay, my clarification for it is that the school district is the broad, it includes the students and us as an organization or institution, so it's just breaking it down, so we go from the broad into breakdowns.
We've got about 20 minutes left, I think we can leave that to Ms. Dillard to figure out how she might want to, I'm not going to argue or worry about it, if it's institutional goals, I'm fine with that, too.
Okay. I will process that. I think that, I mean, in looking at it in the beginning, we do have the three policies that these are covering, it's the goals for achievement, institutional goals, and student goals, and I think for the most part, we saw that 0200 capturing 142 and 150, but I'll, I'll take a closer look at it. So we're, we're looking at Article 1, and the first policy is 1230, citizen advisory committees, and I'm just going to quickly pull it up on the screen here. This policy isn't saying a whole lot that I think that we need to discuss, I just wanted to point out that this is where, what you're capturing with ad hoc advisory committees in your new policy 9130.1, that language was in this policy, so Article 1 is community relations, and there was AASB language under advisory committees that discussed how it was a board-established committee, and so I just added the language, using ad hoc advisory committees instead of citizen advisory committees, because that's true to your new policy 9130.1, and chose to leave the specifics about how those operate in Article 9. So I just wanted to show you that. And then at our January work session, we talked a little bit about bringing over advisory, or sorry, administrative advisory committee language, which our current advisory committee language is about CTE committee, and that will live in the administrative regulation, but not here in the policy. So this policy is presented how we want it.
Can we, second paragraph starts with as need arises, so you have advisories committees shall serve, we might want to change that to ad hoc since administrative advisory. The difference, why it matters, an ad hoc committee appointed by the board is subject to OMA, where any other working group or superintendent's advisory committee is not, and so just being really clear, and so that we don't get ourselves into the confusion of wording again, where we call something an ad hoc when it's not, because that does not have the same burden of work involved, and notice, and record-keeping, or any of that.
So changing anywhere where it says citizen advisory committees above, when it's referencing ad hoc advisory, make sure it's all consistently ad hoc advisory. But is the title of the policy a citizen advisory committees, okay, since it also captures the administrative advisory committees?
I think so.
Okay.
Clarification?
Mr. Doran?
Just so I understand, the, if we title it a citizen advisory, it includes what we call school board committees and ad hoc committees? Do I understand that correctly?
I think these are separate types of committees, so they are advisory committees, they can be advisory committees under the administration, or they can be, if we were to create an advisory committee that includes ad hoc committee, community members, so a more robust, but it would fall under all of the guidelines of OMA because they're under the board, but they would involve citizens. It, it, not our established standing committees. So if we wanted to appoint an ad hoc citizen advisory committee that included a board member and other people, but it is one that will disappear once the work is done, it would be this.
Mr. Doran?
Then, then what I would suggest... Then, then what I would suggest is Paragraph 2, or putting ad hoc at the beginning. The school board recognized that ad hoc citizen advisory committees, okay? And because when you read it, at least as I read it, well, we have citizen committees, which are board committees, and then it goes into ad hoc. So I would, this is really addressing ad hoc citizen committees, citizen advisory committees. And I think I would put that, and probably right in the title, but certainly in the first sentence.
Could we add a separate, so you have administrative advisories committees, and we have citizen advisory committees, is the title of the policy? Can we add another bulleted that says, "Ad hoc citizen advisory committees"?
As another heading to go into that first two paragraphs?
So it makes it clear, this covers everything. This section is only about ad hoc citizen advisory committees.
Yes, that sounds really good.
Ms. Burnett.
Maybe this is a silly question, but we have school board committee policy, and then we have citizen advisory committees. To me, that says those are two different committees. I'm just trying to understand the language and why we would want to change it up. I, maybe I'm not understanding.
I think it's similar to the goals that you had when you created 9130.1. So, ad hoc, I think in our, in your board committee policy, it has one sentence about ad hoc committees, which are different than your standing board committees, right? So you created that 9130.1 to address those specifically, because they're different. This policy addressed advisory, citizen advisory committees in the same way that, how you call them, ad hoc advisory committees. So they were addressed in this policy. But since you moved that information to 9130.1, I thought it good to just point out that they exist, and that they're different than standing committees, but without all the specifics on how they operate. I was confused, too, about the difference between, like, what's citizen advisory committee, ad hoc advisory committee? And there is good language in the ASB policy on citizen advisory committees that maybe would be good to look at when you're finalizing your 9130.1. There might be some good ideas in there, but I think that policy that you worked on there looked good. The next policy, actually two policies, public complaints concerning the schools and public complaints concerning school personnel. I brought these up because there's actually a full, like, five policies in this section about how, about public complaints and how the school board and the school district handles public complaints. And at that October work group, the work group had requested global changes to the language in these policies, to say, instead of complaints, to say feedback and challenges, and then to call complainants persons experiencing challenges. And I, it got a little messy sounding, honestly. And I think in reviewing it internally, it felt better to just call it what it was, especially since a complaint process will lead ultimately possibly to a formal complaint process, and that language is really specific. So I just, since that was a change from what the work group had requested, I wanted to talk about it. Mr. Doran, then Mr. Burgess.
Okay, that was the thing that jumped out at me, and I am fully in support. Keep a complaint that's common reference, and we have it in procedures, et cetera. So I'm very supportive, and you adjust my question.
Yeah, I mean, I support keeping it with complaint and complainants, because the language does get challenging very quickly. But that said, I don't think I understand the, why the change was requested in the first place. And, you know, because I wasn't part of that discussion. Could someone review or clarify?
I don't know who was assigned to that one. It could be people who are no longer on the board. This was at the bigger, before you guys got on. We each had our own little tables, and we went through separate sections. So like, Mr. Doran did the now Chapter 9s. This wasn't the one I did. So I don't know that we'll be able to give you, unless you know what board member was assigned to that group.
Ms. Marotti.
Okay. And that makes a lot of sense, given how I know and love Ms. Marotti, that feedback and challenges is less hostile, less like, and so I think she's just trying to make things more welcoming and friendly. But I support keeping it as well with complaints and complainants, because if somebody is searching our policy, they're going to type in complaint. They want to know how to make a complaint. I appreciate the effort behind that, but we need to write it for the way people look.
Right.
I liked the positive sound of it, too, but once you started changing the words, it just, it got messy.
Okay, thank you.
And I didn't necessarily need to bring two policies over to show you that, but I did. So there's nothing else to say there, though. So we're on our last policy, and this is about solicitation of funds and materials. The big change here would be to give approval to the superintendent to approve fundraising requests.
And we already passed a policy earlier this year that reflected this change, right? Or?
That was for donations.
For donations, got it, okay.
Yes, with the donations changes, that was changed to $10,000, but all of our existing policy language that speaks to fundraising still says the $1,000 for approval. Ms. Burnett and Mr. Doran.
Would this take this out of our consent agenda? The fundraising, would that take it out of consent?
It would. And the other recommendation, why we bring this forward, is it would remove a burden off of schools. It is a lot for schools to keep up on the different fundraising requests that come through, especially at the high school level. And as we're looking at one more cut to the secretarial staff there, this is one item where we're talking about services that we potentially don't continue because of cuts. This is a place where, you know, we could realize that.
Follow up. So I have a concern about that, just due to recognition of fundraisers. I like the fundraising being in our consent agenda, because even though we don't read it and we just kind of consent it off, people are able to read that and see what our students are doing. Would there be a way that we could still somewhere, somehow formally recognize fundraisers that our students are doing if it's not in the consent?
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
Okay. Mr. Doran.
I want to keep it in with the $1,000. And the reason is, I think it is extremely important for the board to be aware of how much money we're raising from our community. The, it does have a piece that it adds a little bit to the public service announcement, if you want. But more important for the board, and $1,000 is a lot of money, that, and the more we see of these, and what they're raising it for is important. It informs our budget considerations. But it also is something that I think, as a board, we need to be cognizant of how much we're asking from the school, but how much within our community is being asked and raised. We have a lot of groups in our community that are raising funds. And our understanding how the complementarity of those go together. So I think it's a very important thing for us as board members to be aware of, for our community piece. And because of that, it has also raised my awareness of, in a sense, we're getting bigger fundraising requests than we have in previous years. The dollar amounts, and it's something that I think we have to face. But if we take that away, it's, yes, as a principle, I would have to send a note. In the big picture, I think we ought to be aware of how much we're asking from our community in additional fundraisers.
Ms. Anderson.
That kids have to ask for funds and fundraise anyway, shouldn't even be. And to tie their hands in any form, to me, that's what they asked us about, to, in the donations. I just, our students are fundraising earlier. You see them fundraising a lot earlier than they have in the past, because we're not funding it. The legislature's not funding it. And community, that's what we're a part of, and they take the pride in to do this for our students and what the students have needs. So it, you know, because of the generous donations and, I don't know, maybe we should create some endowments or something, so that people could trust, so that people can do it. You know, I'm just saying, like PBS, just give us an endowment. Yeah, so I'm not, I don't, I don't want to tie their hands in any sort of way. And we have an accounting, I mean, we are made aware of what the money is, what they're raising it for, the group that's doing it. And they've complied with policies as far as they've been stated. So that was part of the challenge, is that we, with the board thing, was tying the hands of what they needed to have done and approved. So I don't know, maybe I'm off on this, but I would like to see us, you know, do what's necessary.
Ms. Burnett.
I do not disagree. I just like the recognition. And if kids are fundraising, it'd be really cool to know about it. I mean, we don't need to approve of it. I appreciate the superintendent taking that on, taking it off of our secretary's hands, our principal's hands, you know, taking away some paperwork. But I still would like to find a way to put it out there for recognition purposes.
So I'll put myself in the queue, and then you can go next, Mr. Doran. I support us not doing this. I went and looked at Anchorage again. They have this policy pretty much verbatim. And I'm also in my kid's school every single day, and it's a charter, which means they have just one secretary. And I know putting in these requests, like, she's complained to me. She's, when is this, I have to get this in, we can't do this. We are adding a burden to the people who are on the ground doing the job. Just because we like it is not a good enough reason for me to leave things on people's plates when their head is already just barely above water. And I, we talked to, so I think Ms. Burnett was on, but Mr., you know, two cycles ago, in a retreat about ways that we could positively recognize stuff. I received a text from a community member saying, when are we celebrating? How are we celebrating these praises just this morning? And we talked about some different things, like perhaps, like, we have summaries of other things that are a part of our board agenda. We could have a summary of all the donations received that month at one of our monthly board meetings, because I would like to go through that. I go through and I look at who's leaving our district. Like, the one this week, like, hit me hard. There's a lot of names on that list. I think it's impactful to have a compiled list, but that doesn't place the burden on our administration. It's a list that could probably easily be pulled from accounting. We also, we talked about possibly before board meetings, putting up on these big screens that we have that says, here are our big donations we received this month. Ways that we can start celebrating the fact that our community absolutely does support our schools. And I would love to see us also have some kind of district calendar that has fundraisers and student activity events that I, I don't want to have to go to Facebook or other places to find it. It would be great to have it on the website and one place. Here are all the things that I can look at and then direct our community to. There's a lot of people now who are not on social media, and it is a barrier to information and a barrier to entry in being a part of this community. So we need to find other ways, but also be cognizant that our current budget cuts $600,000 from downtown. So these are aspirational goals that might not be reasonable with the fact that we're cutting staff down here as well. Mr. Doran.
I'd certainly be open to raising that $1,000 threshold. But I, we're not recognizing, we're not celebrating, we're saying we need money, and groups need money. And we do say, you know, so it's a different type of thing. We are saying we're going to take more money out of, ask for more money from our community. And I think that's important. So raising that threshold might be, you know, when we started getting the regular ones for the book fairs, you know, they never made $1,000. So it wasn't something that came to the board on a normal basis. There was a few exceptions in some schools. But for the most part, now, that's, they do. And so, looking at raising that. But I think we do have a major responsibility as a board. For some of these amounts, I mean, we're seeing 5, 10, 15, $20,000 requests for fundraising. I think we better be available, be aware of that, because that is becoming big monies. And we have a responsibility within that. So I've said my piece, but I will say that I'm open to raising that threshold and having a conversation on what's an appropriate threshold with that.
Ms. Anderson.
Through the chair to Dr. Barnard. When the requests, these fundraisers come in, can you give us a little bit of detail on them?
Yeah, so if it's currently, if the school feels like a fundraiser is going to raise over $1,000, the secretary or the principal at the school needs to put in a request that goes into a future board packet. Now, as Ms. Hardy explained, secretaries do get anxious about this at times, because sometimes fundraising opportunities pop up at the last minute, and they'd like to go forward with it, and they can't, because it has to go in a board packet. And so, that also puts administration in a tough spot. Do you follow policy and say, nope, you can't do that fundraiser. We realize it just came up. It might be a great opportunity, but it's got to wait for that next board meeting, which could be several weeks away? Or do you, you know, break policy and allow them to go forward? And that, we are seeing that more and more, especially because that $1,000 limit isn't the $1,000 that it used to be. You know, the dollar doesn't go as far, and so as they're fundraising, you're definitely certainly seeing bigger fundraisers that the students are doing.
And could you give me just for a couple of categories where this big fundraising is coming from?
Yeah, I mean, across the district, you see it elementary all the way through high school. So for different school trips, or different things that they're trying to raise funding for, for different student groups. And so, certainly, if you're taking a trip, $1,000 doesn't go very far anymore. And so, you know, we're definitely seeing more requests.
I was curious, is it like for more athletic stuff, more academic stuff, or is it across the board?
All across the board, honestly. You see student clubs, you see athletics, you see music groups, you see elementary. Yep. Yep.
Put myself back, maybe just to add to that. I mean, this year alone, I can think of multiple things that my son's school has raised over $1,000 for, that they've had to scramble. I mean, we sold oranges and other fruits that raised. We sold T-shirts. We fundraised just from donations to afford to pay teachers to go and get grade-level training for Waldorf. There's a lot of fundraising, and if it's coming from the school, it requires, I don't think we require our PTAs to do this, which is, it's the workaround, and it's why booster clubs operate the way they do. It's a workaround. A booster club can hold the fundraiser whenever they want, and then they make a motion to donate it. So they found workarounds, but we're adding a burden to our staff for no good reason. This is, $1,000 doesn't buy you any. This is, a thousand dollars doesn't buy you anything. Like, I know that seems like this huge number, but I went out to dinner last night and just a dinner for two people was 100. That is not unusual. That is the nature, I mean, we're feeling inflation everywhere and that's the same thing. A thousand is so tiny. Um, and I don't see what the benefit of capping it. I think capturing what has been collected makes sense, but we've never not, that I can think of, had a reason to approve unless it was a fundraiser that was not appropriate. I could think of some of those, but that's not what we're, you know. I, I trust when it says the superintendent or his designees can figure out appropriate fundraisers for students so that we're not doing things that would get us in sticky situations. Mr. Doran, then Ms. Burnett.
Relative to this and tied into another question, related question. We're saying it doesn't come, the suggestion is that it not necessarily come to the board, but it's the superintendent. I think it's important that the administration knows what schools are doing, especially, you know, I mean, especially it's the bigger things because they can be competing. And I'm not saying that's necessarily inappropriate, that they may be competing for the same monies, but it could be. And I, and I think that awareness as well as, um, the threshold at which, okay, these monies come into club accounts and how that keeps the, the administration informed about sizable growths to a club account, you know, until what time, you know. So they're funding, fundraising, if they're doing a $20,000 fundraiser, for instance, you're kind of, that's on your radar that you're going to see that get put into the club account. And if it doesn't, where is it? You know, again, and I know we have processes to try and make sure things don't sit in a teacher's desk until they get deposited or coach's desk or whatever, you know. And, and that's just because you get it, you put it in. But, you know, the movement, we want to make sure it gets, gets into our thing. So administrative, how you would handle that. I am interested in terms of, and this is a question from kind of administrative side, doing this, commercial solicitations or on behalf of a charitable organization? And it's a question in that, schools will do a fundraiser, you know, take jump rope for heart, for instance. It was mixed in with, um, exercise. I mean, a lot of different things. And then, you know, that money was given and there are other ones that are, that are done like that raising money for the door or things of this sort. So I don't want to take away that and that sense of community service that we're trying to build, that citizenship piece. But I'm also well aware of organizations that have come, charitable organizations that have come to the district, to a school and said, we want you to collect money for this. And we said, no. Does this leave the door to open on that? Will it be addressed in ARs? Uh, I'm just putting it as, does this cover our bases appropriately?
I would say it does cover our bases appropriately. I haven't had those requests since I've been in the district, not saying that they don't happen. But I feel like we could outline that clearly in AR. Um, and then certainly through our assistant superintendents working with the principals in terms of ensuring that there's not crossover, you know, between schools or competing interests. We would develop AR that requests, you know, would come through principals to their assistant superintendents for fundraisers, especially sizable fundraisers that they would work with their principals. And so, you know, my designees would be the assistant superintendent since they work with principals on a regular basis.
Follow up. And to the question that the way this is written now, any fundraising would involve approval before it was done? Whatever threshold, whether it was $100 or whether it was 5,000? Or what do you anticipate?
Yeah, I might recommend something in the 5,000 range going forward. The, that that would come through principals to the assistant superintendent for smaller fundraisers. I wouldn't see that need necessarily to be in the mix or in the weeds on those on a regular basis.
Follow up to, just to that, should that be put in here then? The 5,000?
I would recommend that, yeah, for a, a future policy discussion, yes.
So adding that it comes to the superintendent, not the board?
Correct.
Okay. And I just want to flag, because I actually showed this to somebody. If you go to our website and I just, if you Google FNSBSD donations, it will take you to our partner with our district. And our largest donation thus far this year is the Lathrop High Wrestling Boosters with over 25,000. And you can click through and see. So further illustrate, boosters have found a way around. We accept their money as a donation to a specific area, but they've donated and, and done it. And so anything over 1,000 shows up on there and there's quite a lot of donations we've received this year. And we, we should celebrate those. You know, Wood River Elementary PTA between 10,000 and 25,000. And so is the West Valley High School Soccer Boosters and Delta Airlines Foundation. We've had significant donations. Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
Just a point of clarification. PTAs, booster clubs, those are not district organizations. So they have their own things and stuff like that. And that's why we treat them as donation to the district. But if it's a district group that is doing the fundraising, then it's a different thing because that, those all become public monies and we have to account for them as such.
That's correct.
So it is 8:12. If everyone is okay, we have actually finished the work for the day. And Mr. Doran.
Very quickly, because it came up in this section that relates to another one, is the note on 12:30, first page of the section, which I hadn't realized, that state law allows the appointment of persons 17 to 21 to any advisory committee, which just relates to our comments on student advisory, which says a senior was more likely to be 17. So it brings us into state law.
With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.